Ding, ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the City of Bettendorf City Council meeting. Today is Tuesday, May 16th, 2023 at 7 o'clock PM. Michelle, would you please call the roll?
Adamson.
Here.
Brown.
Here.
Connors.
Here.
Nauman.
Here.
Sexer.
Here.
Baden.
Here.
Palzinski.
Here.
Perfect, thank you all for being here. Now, if you could all please rise, remove any caps or headdresses you may have, and join me in the pledge of allegiance, which will be followed by an invocation given by Bettendorf Police Chaplain and Pastor of Bettendorf Presbyterian Church, Pastor Troy Winder. Please stay standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pastor Troy. All right, sir, thank you for being here. Yeah, regular side is perfect. Right there. Yep. The one right above you. You're in a perfect spot right there.
This is, this is new technology.
Hey, baby, we're trying.
That's great. We thank you, Holy One, for this opportunity to be together. We thank you for this community that you've given us. We ask, we ask that as we do gather, as we debate the business that is before us, as we make decisions, as this, as this body has discussion, that that all that we do and say bring you glory and bring glory to all your children.
Amen. Amen. Thank you, Pastor Winder. Pleasure to see you, my friend. All right, we have a couple of recognitions and a proclamation I'll deliver from the center of the room. Again, especially in a night like tonight where we expect maybe a longer than normal meeting, I thank council for the indulgence in my quest to bring our champions of all of our institutions down to City Hall to introduce them to what we do here at City Hall, but more importantly, to hold them out as champions in our community, hoping that others will follow your role. Those qualities that you have exhibited to become a champion in individual sport, which is also kind of a team sport, are very important. That hardworking attitude, the perseverance that you have, those are things that will serve you well wherever you land in your future. And we hope that you're here in the Quad Cities, still living in Bettendorf and contributing here in the city of Bettendorf, but wherever you go, these are things, those qualities will serve you well. Not necessarily the fact that you were able to win the state championship, but how you got there and those qualities that took you all the way. So for our recognition to the center of the room, I'd like to first invite Abigail Meyer. She's the 2023 state champion. Abigail, come meet me. Congratulations, way to go. Anybody want to bring up here with you? Come on, Coach.
Thank you.
Great job. This is Abigail Meyer and her coach, Thomas Isaacson. Abigail is Pleasant Valley's first state champion at the Iowa Girls State Meet. She entered the state championship ranked number one. She had the number two seed based upon seeding criteria, but she ended up in the finals. She got into that state championship match with only one loss on her freshman resume. Abigail wrestled very tough during that first period of the first, of her championship match, and neither wrestler was able to score. She did so zero, zero at the end of first. In the second period, her opponent chose down. Abigail wrestled toughly, did not allow her to escape towards zero points. So that's pretty cool because then now Abigail gets her choice, whether she wants to be on her feet, on top or down. Most wrestlers, as you did, would choose down. Abigail got a reversal, held on, and won a state championship as a freshman. Way to go, champion. Beats of crystal here in recognition of your state championship. And it reads as follows, in recognition of Pleasant Valley High School's first ever 2023 Iowa Girls High School Athletic Union Wrestling Champion, Abigail Meyer, 120 pounds. Ladies and gentlemen, you're a champion forever. Thank you. Awesome. Abigail, anything that you'd like to say? Coach, you can follow Abigail. All right, here. At a girl. Congratulations again, that's yours. Okay, come on up. This is Kayden McDermott, he's 170 pounds, state champion as a senior. And his coach, Coach Larson, Coach Larson, thank you both for being here. Appreciate you.
My talk, I didn't know what to do.
That's okay, I got you. I've known Kayden his entire career. I get to watch him beat up my whole box. So it's not, you know, that's where my heart lies, although it's really with wrestling. Congratulations. So Kayden had an awesome senior year. His career record, however, was 137 and 26. That's 10th all time at Pleasant Valley High School. Season record was 48 and one, 19 falls. First at MAC, first at districts, first team all MAC, team leader with wins, points, and decisions. The plan going into his state championship match, because Coach had done a really good job of scouting, was to figure out how they could get past this guy and let Kayden stay really busy on his feet. Very strong, good at hand fighting, and he was hoping to try to wear down his opponent, his opponent in that first three minute period. So Kayden's calling card is being really tough on top, scoring lots of points and pinning kids. So if we could get him in that position, they'd be happy. So we got through the first period, then we had Kayden, who chose down in the second. Got out right away. A kid who's a good rider. Then he chose down in the third. Knocked out. You almost get a takedown, then you go into overtime. So in overtime, nobody scores. They end up in a sudden victory, kind of this, this extra overtime, if you will. And Kayden had the opportunity to choose down based on criteria, how those guys chose their periods in the regular match. He chose down, got his escape. As soon as that escape happens, we're done. We're state champion at 170 pounds in the season. Congratulations. Playing baseball now with writers, kids, that's trouble.
I'll put two in the morning last night.
Yes. Well, I do have a plaque that reads as follows, in recognition of Pleasant Valley High School's 2023 Iowa High School Athletic Association Class 3A Wrestling Champion, Kayden McDermott, 170 pounds. Video champion.
Don't break the camera, Jimmy.
Congratulations. Anything you want to say?
Thank you, Coach Larson, being there all four years for me.
Okay, appreciate it.
Thank you for this, this moment, it's pretty cool. I've been part of the floor and I hope you continue to.
We'll keep doing it. I gotta get elected to get in November. Hey, Ace. Thank you. Appreciate all you do, keep doing it. Keep doing it. All right, we have a proclamation for motorcycle awareness month. For that, we welcome Keith Adams, this Keith Pickens, he's here, I recognize you right away. My brotherhood, Aiden, towards education of the Iowa District 15. You're the coordinator, you'll be here tonight for this proclamation. Thanks for being here. We do have a proclamation from the Office of the Mayor. Whereas the people of Bettendorf have endured, have an enduring regard for the preservation of life on our streets and our highways. And whereas motorcycle awareness month is being observed throughout the nation. And whereas all motorcycle organizations, clubs, dealerships, groups, and highway safety officials in our city should join with the Iowa Government Safety Bureau and Abate of Iowa in actively promoting safe operation, increased rider training, improved licensing efforts, and motorcycle awareness. And whereas during this month and all months, all street and highway users should unite in safe sharing of roadways throughout the city of Bettendorf and the state of Iowa. And whereas motorcycle awareness month provides citizens of Bettendorf an opportunity to commit themselves to being more alert and aware of other motor vehicle drivers, especially those operating motorcycles. Now, therefore, I, Robert Gallagher, the representative of Bettendorf, Iowa, appear by proclaiming the month of May 2023 as motorcycle awareness month in our community. And I urge all motor vehicle operators to join in this effort to keep our streets and highways safe and to start seeing motorcycles. And to, uh, let's have you speak. You've got the floor, you've got your proclamation, and then we'll do a picture. Thanks for being here.
Thank you, thank you, council. As Mary said, May is motorcycle awareness month. What A-Mate of Iowa does, we have various rider education programs throughout the state of Iowa. We have another program called Share the Road for our beginning drivers. That's basically what we do is try to promote safe riding of motorcycles and just keep this in mind, look twice and save a life. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Excellent.
Appreciate that. Again, thank you, council. It's always a pleasure to bring champions to City Hall and to do proclamations for important efforts in our community. Okay, let's move to public requests of council. If you are somebody who would like to be heard on a matter that is not already on tonight's agenda for a public hearing, we'd like to hear from you. Please limit your comments to two minutes. Please try not to be repetitive. Please refrain from outbursts like clapping or yelling. Please be respectful with your comments. Those who are here on the Devil's Glen and Forest Grove Road, you'll have a public hearing, as well as those who may be here on the other items on tonight's agenda, including 5019 Hopewell, so there'll be a different time for you all to speak. Is there anybody here to speak on public requests of council? All right, let's close public requests of council, and we're going to move to our public hearings. The first set of public hearings is with regard to the southwest corner of Devil's Glen Road and Forest Grove Drive. There are seven public hearings. What I intend to do is open all seven public hearings so that you can be heard, and your comments will be on the record for all public hearings. Then we'll close them one by one and move to council deliberation and consideration. So first, we're going to welcome Mark Hunt, who is our Director of Community Development. He may have some help from Taylor Beswick, who is our city planner, and maybe Chris Curran, our city attorney. And we have had the opportunity to review the Plan and Zone video, nice, long video. Thank you all for those who spoke. We certainly took your comments into consideration. We do have all the emails that have been sent to us, especially those who were sent to the city clerk for part of the record. And we had an opportunity last night to have a long discussion and presentation on this project. We have invited Mark, Taylor, and Chris to provide an abbreviated presentation since you all went through Plan and Zone and council is very well versed on this issue. Mr. Hunt, thank you for joining us.
Thank you, Your Honor. I would just call attention to the council member's seats. There are three new pieces of paper from yesterday at your desk.
Correct.
One is a condition to propose, one proposes a new condition relative to the height of the townhomes and the likeness of the townhomes, if you will, so that there only be two stories, 35 feet, and similar in design and characters of the elevations that were shown yesterday. So I want to make sure that was.
Signed by the developer.
And signed by the developer, reviewed by City Attorney Curran. I also wanted to call your attention to a memo prepared by Taylor Beswick, city planner. As of today's date, he did a full analysis on the signatures. We have, we have four valid protests from the citizens in the area relative to the cases today. Those valid protests, I'll just read out loud, 22014, 22022, 22023, and 22024 are the valid protests. 22017, that case did not have a valid protest.
I don't typically read those case numbers, but tonight I'm going to do my best. If anybody next to me might kick me and remind me if I screw that up, please.
Yes, sir. And I think Councilor Curran can explain the voting that that requires with a valid protest.
Thank you, Mark. So with a valid protest under our city code and Iowa code, would require a super majority of three-fourths of all of the members of council for passage of those cases that are subject to the super majority requirement. So all of the cases with the exception of 23017. To clarify also, the land use amendments are not subject to a super majority requirement. So those are the first two cases that will be heard. Those do not have a super majority requirement either. So six of seven council members would need to vote in the affirmative at each of the three ratings for passage of those rezonings that are subject to the super majority requirement.
And just to be clear, I think in the memo, we've got calendar year '22, but it's '23, and in the top subject, those are correct, and they are correct on the agenda, 23014, 23017, which did not have the valid protest, 23022, 23023, 23024. So those are the accurate numbers. That's fine.
Yep.
It's in here correctly.
We can update the record, yeah, that's a typo. It should be 23, and then the case numbers as described.
Yep, go ahead, Mark.
And then also, I just think Michelle's done a really diligent job of providing you any correspondence. There are some news correspondence that came in last night, as I understand it, and she provided those to you at the dice.
Perfect. You have the floor.
If I can turn my screen on. Mr. J.
There it is.
Thank you. And so we'll do the Reader's Digest version, if you will, of this presentation. Forest Grove and Devil's Glen is the corner in question, often referred to as old barnstormers' ball fields. That use has gone away, the fields have been removed, it's been in egg production for several years. There is a couple of things going on here. So let's talk about the future land use map change first. There's two future land use map changes that are being explored. If you kind of divide this area diagonally, you'll have a ULI over here proposed and a UMI proposed here. That's necessary for any rezoning to happen. Right now, it's in parks and open space. Staff feels like that is a mistake that happened during our last future, or future land use map update, conference of plan update. So we would propose, regardless of what other decisions are made tonight, that that map needs fixed, and that's a separate case from the development that's proposed to come forward. Kind of looking at the left-hand side of the screen again. Parks and open space, we would call this a scribbler's air or a mapmaker's air, if you will. What happened, we believe, is that there was the barnstormer ball field, the consultant came into town, was doing our mapping, was doing the windshield surveys, saw the ball fields, thought it was a city park, and marked it as such, and we missed it. And I'll give you a few more slides that kind of prove that out, if you will. Highlighted on this slide is the ballpark site plan in yellow here. This note says, hey, this is a temporary use, this is a C1 field or C1 piece of property, and we expect to return it to C1 uses in the future after this temporary ball field is taken down.
My kid was playing at that time, and we had to go back through all this stuff when we had to find a new place to go. So we know that, unfortunately, they had that power.
This slide is meant to show you that through time, from 1973, again, the year I was born, that this map was, or this piece of ground was always proposed for some type of commercial use until that mistake happened in 2017 with the future land use map update. So not that you need to zoom in and read through each one of these, we have these maps available online, and we also have them at City Hall or Public Works and can provide them to you. But again, consistently through 1973, multiple updates thereafter, always commercial in nature. And I will point out that the current zoning is C1. The city has never tried to purchase the property, has never attempted to rezone the property, and has never put it in a park plan to be considered a park. So really, all roads lead back to the mistake that was made in the mapping process of the comp plan update. Let's look at the right-hand side of the screen. So staff would contend that the future land use map amendment are consistent with the previous conference of plans and should be followed going forward. Therefore, we need to update our new, our current map. We've looked at the surrounding development, we've got some commercial uses proposed to the north, we've got some R5, more high intensity residential uses down here, and we have some residential uses across Devil's Glen Road and to the, just to the west. We think that this map change is consistent with this pattern of development and the existing zoning and surrounding future land uses. I'll remind you again that we do have a positive staff recommendation. We also had a 7-0 vote for approval or recommended approval on April 19th, 2023 by the Planning and Zoning Commission. I would ask, are there any questions?
Questions from council? We had an opportunity again last night to have this robust discussion, ask any questions. Yes, Councilmember Nauman, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Mark, you mentioned tonight, and I think we've looked at previously, that there would perhaps be some commercial north of Forest Grove. And I do think that the dynamic of this entire corridor seems to be changing with not only the capacity to go all the way to Davenport, but all the way to the TPK Sports Complex. So this seems to be evolving, and we've heard some of the residents through the P&Z process talk about the increase in traffic and flow and that sort of thing. But by very nature, it appears like some of those things, even without this current project, may already be happening. So the introduction of traffic could be happening as well as these projects. And I'm not privileged to what may be on the north side of that road, but is that the general feel, that there will be more commercial introduced into this corridor?
Yeah, I think we're talking pattern of development and commercial follows houses. We've reserved these corners, and for the most part, in our city. If you go from, let's just say, Tanglefoot North, we've reserved these corners to be commercial in nature. As houses and rooftops come in, commercial follows. That's a pretty standard pattern of development, and that's what we're seeing here. As far as the business of the intersection, it's continued to be busy regardless of what happens here. This is a main east-west corridor between Bettendorf and Davenport. The, you know, the euphemism is this is the new 53rd Street. In some ways, that's true. We do have a lot of east-west traffic now with Forest Grove and Veterans Parkway connecting.
And back to the, I guess, the example on the Falcon Avenue with the proper buffering, where we had single-family homes built right up against commercial. You like some of the sense of what you're seeing in terms of the way this would then create some sort of buffer in this layout, right?
Yeah, certainly, when we, you know, move on to the, to the cases at hand as far as the rezonings, they're conditioning those rezonings to include some things that I think make it more palatable for that R1 use. And they're also going to finish out a large section of this R1 neighborhood and actually propose a rezoning that would expand it so the cul-de-sac here could actually be built out and have standard-sized, standard width lots, and we can dive into that in just a little bit.
Thank you. Thank you, Your Honor.
Councilmember Palzinski, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I just, thank you, Your Honor.
Or a question, I guess. We haven't gotten to the comments. If you had a question now, otherwise, if you want to discuss it, we can do that when we, after the public hearings, I guess.
Yeah, no problem. Thank you. I do have a question. Mark, can you talk about some of the traffic mitigation pieces that have been put in place? I know we have stop signs that were recently put in, but can you talk a little bit more about the plan to manage the flow of traffic in the future out in this location?
Yeah, I'll give you the planner's version, and I'll ask the city engineer to help me answer that question a little more in depth. But right now, we do have, as of Monday, what, last week, maybe? We do have the stop signs in place. That's a temporary measure. We do have some construction going on right now that is rerouting traffic because of the Forest Grove Road project. Those stop signs will be replaced in 2024 by a signalized intersection. We think that's, that's a really good improvement, and it's going to help with timing and turning movements and those type of things. And I would turn it over to Brent to add more detail.
Brent Morlock, our city engineer.
Thank you, Your Honor. Planning version was pretty accurate there. Mark is correct, we will be replacing the signalized, or excuse me, the stop-controlled intersection with the full traffic signal. That is currently under design. Will be finished here shortly. We've already started the acquisition of some of the materials. There's a lot of long lead time on most of the electronics and the uprights and the masked arms, so we want to get that moving.
Thank you. Any other questions? Yes, Councilmember Adamson, please.
Mr. Morlock, I know there's plans in the future for Devil's Glen to be widened. Is, is, not being an engineer, is that something that we can discuss, the timing of that? Because I've heard 25, 26.
Yeah, right, right now it is, and I apologize, I gave the wrong number last night, I didn't have the CIP in front of me. It is currently in calendar year '26 in the Community Improvement Program, but as I did say last night, we reevaluate that every fall when we go into budgets.
We can talk about that and planning this, this year.
Yeah, the, the nice part about that project, there was a lot of forethought that was put into previous construction on Devil's Glen, and that the majority of the storm sewer and the intakes are actually already built, they're just currently covered. But that is still a lot of paving that has to go in there, so we're still looking at, you know, a million and a half dollar, maybe $2 million project. So we've got to find the funding to be able to move that up if you so do desire.
So it's, a lot of its priority and what's shift money around if we need to?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor.
You bet. Mr. Hunt, did you have anything else on these particular seven public hearings?
I can do the other presentation if that pleases the council.
Okay.
Let's move on, and I think we've kind of.
Hit the rezoning?
Talked about these cases, 2314, 2317, 2322, 2323, and 2324. Sounds like I'm doing Lotto. Here we have the actual, the actual rezonings that are coming in place. So if we had the future land use map change approved, that would allow a rezoning to occur. This, the requested rezonings would be allowed under that future land use map designation that we talked about, the ULI and UMI. Applicant is EA Enterprises, they request as multiple rezonings of property located here at this corner. Current zoning is R1 and C1. Remember, we do have a little smidge of R1 over here that will come into play. And the proposed zoning is C1 and C2. The C2 will be mainly residential in nature, and R1 and R3 will be, will be that, just residential. And again, this is highly conditioned, and we'll talk about that going forward here. So here's a current zoning, all C1 with a smidge of R1 over here. The proposed zoning, and I've got a better slide than this, that will be a little closer up, shows you the C2. The difference striping on the C2 is to show the C2 that's going to be used for truly commercial use and the C2 that's going to be used for townhouse style use. We have that R3 designation here. Again, that'll be townhomes. C1 is simply C1, but it will have some conditions placed on it. R1, so we can finish out the neighborhood to the west, and C1 here. I'll let you digest this slide a little bit. This does have the case numbers on it, and I think provides a lot, a lot more detail of what's actually going on in the site. So the largest commercial area will be this green section here, case 2314. That'll be the, kind of the heart of the area as far as the heart of the commercial area. This piece here will remain C1, so it is what it is. It's not changed, it's not up for consideration, but the applicant is placing similar conditions, if you will, on this piece of ground as the rest of them. So no gas station, I think that's the point we all want to get out and have made here. We do need to have some C1 brought in here so they can have a usable sized lot. This blue section is going to go to residential, so they can have wide enough lots to fill out along the cul-de-sac that will be built in this neighborhood. Townhomes in this yellow piece, and then townhomes in this blue piece. The difference between the C2 and R3 is just the setbacks in C2 are a little more favorable, so they can design a lot that's a little more usable and build a product that the applicant thinks is, is marketable. Talked a lot about some restrictions or conditions placed on this property. I'll zoom into these so you can see them. I did read these aloud last night, I'll just kind of go through them quickly. No gas sales of any kind, that's what this top portion is telling us. And then we have the same use limitations that we have in our downtown overlay district, so no tobacco, vape, or CBD shops, no tattoo piercing or tattoo parlors or piercings, no storage units, no automotive sales, automotive services or body repair, pawn shops, quick cash, title loans, those type of things will not be allowed. Storage, staging yards, that type of thing will not be allowed, and of course, no adult entertainment would be allowed as well. And then today was delivered a, another condition on the townhomes themselves, though they'll have to meet the likeness of what was shown as part of this presentation, and they'll also be no taller than 35 feet.
Which means it would be two stories.
Two stories, yeah. And here's those renderings, those elevations that we talked about. Some of the townhomes shown here, the large overall site shown in the middle. And then you have some of the commercial strip mall type development. Again, these are, these are general elevations, these are not exact site plans. All of that has to come forward. If this is approved, we have to have a site plan, they have to meet setbacks, bulk standards, all those things, but you're getting kind of a look ahead, if you will, with this document and these conditions. But you're getting kind of a look ahead, if you will, with this document and these conditions that have been provided by the applicant. Again, we still have a positive staff recommendation. And on April 19th, 2023, the Planning and Zoning Commission unanimously approved or recommended for approval, 7-0, this lot of cases, if you will.
Any questions for Mark on the rezoning portion? I'll look right this time. Left. Councilmember Palczynski, did you have any questions on the rezoning portion?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. Mark, I know that these conditions are similar or mirroring the ones that we have in place for development in downtown Bettendorf. How many other areas in the city have or has a developer self-imposed these kind of conditions on the proposed developments?
Well, we've had conditional rezonings recently. You know, each case is a little bit different, but I can think, I think we had conditional rezoning down at 1200 Devil's Glen Road, to name one off the top of my mind. But there's been several on infill projects throughout the city. But to this level where they've actually adopted the same set of conditions as is provided in our downtown overlay district, that's unique. I don't know that that's ever been done elsewhere in the city that I'm aware of.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, let's move to these public hearings. And again, we'll open all seven. You're dismissed. You're good. Thank you, Mr. Hunt, Mr. Beswick, Mr. Curran. Good work. So I'm going to open all seven of the public hearings, go through a little rigmarole here to make sure we're opening them correctly. And then we'll invite folks to talk. And we'll talk about that when we get there. But again, kind of like public requests of council, please limit your comments to two minutes. Please try not to be repetitive. Please refrain from outbursts like clapping and yelling. Please be respectful with your comments. Remember, we've got the emails. We had the opportunity to watch the entire tape of the Planning and Zone Commission and have spoken with many of you who have called or talked to us at other places. So I think we have a good feel for the comments. Let's move to the public hearings. Michelle, with regard to number seven, case number 23013, did we publish notice of this public hearing?
Yes, we did, Your Honor, and I do have affidavit of publication.
Did we receive any written correspondence with regard to the same? We have not seen.
No, not any additional.
I'm going to open the public hearing with regard to case number 23013. Let's move to number eight, please, 23021. Michelle, did we publish notice of this public hearing?
Yes, we did, Your Honor, and I do have affidavit of publication.
Did we receive any written correspondence of which council has not seen?
No, we have not.
Okay, let's move to number nine, case number 23014. Did we publish notice of this public hearing?
Yes, we do, and I have affidavit of publication.
Did we receive any written correspondence that we did not review as council?
Well, we have the proposed, the protest that's been in the council packet and just the pieces that we received.
And the things that we received today, you made us aware of and brought us copies.
Yep.
Okay.
That's for everything.
Perfect. Let's go to case number 23017. Did we publish notice of this public hearing?
Yes, we do, and I have affidavit of publication.
Did we receive any written correspondence with regard to this public hearing that council has not seen?
No.
Let's move to number 11, which is case number 23022. Did we publish notice of this public hearing?
Yes, we do, and I have affidavit of publication.
Did we receive any written correspondence that we have not seen?
No.
Let's move to number 12, which is case number 23023. Michelle, did we publish notice of this public hearing?
Yes, we did, Your Honor, and I do have affidavit of publication.
Did we receive any written correspondence about this public hearing that we have not seen?
No.
Let's move to number 13, which is case number 23024. Michelle, did we publish notice of this public hearing?
Yes, we did, and I do have affidavit of publication.
All right, did we receive any written correspondence with regard to the same that we have not seen?
No.
All right, I opened 23013, but we're going to do that again. Let's open the public hearing for case number 23013, case number 23021, case number 23014, case number 23017, case number 23022, case number 23023, and case number 23024. If you'd like to be heard on these items, let's orderly move towards the back so you can be heard. Again, two minutes. Please try not to be repetitive and refrain from outbursts. Go ahead, sir. Also, please state your name and your address before you speak. Greg Jaeger, go right ahead.
Thank you, Your Honor. Greg Jaeger, an attorney at the Pasternak Law Firm, 300 block of West 3rd Street in Davenport. I want to thank staff for their favorable recommendation and the P&amp;Z for their unanimous recommendation on all of these matters. I'm here tonight on behalf of the applicant E&amp;A Enterprises. With me are parts of the engineering and design team as well as the marketers to answer any questions, but we are not planning on making a formal presentation to you about it tonight. On the land use amendments, a couple of quick points. One, does the city have the authority to fix a mistake? Answer to that is yes. Lots of examples over history. The one that comes to mind is the Marlboro Man that used to be on a billboard on Middle Road next to the golf course. That permit was issued improvidently, and the billboard is no longer there. It was a mistake. It got fixed. City has that authority. Should the land use plan be amended because of traffic, you betcha. Devil's Glen and Forest Grove is probably going to be the busiest intersection in the city. You know how busy 53rd is? That has three connection points, 18th, Devil's Glen, and the Roundabout. But for Forest Grove, your only connection points are Devil's Glen and Middle Road at the far end. Anybody coming from Davenport, anybody going from northern Bettendorf or from central Bettendorf is going to use Devil's Glen. That's going to be the busiest place. Accordingly, commercial is very appropriate for that kind of traffic. Third, can commercial and residential exist together? Yes, they can, and they do. The easiest example is on 53rd, just west of the Roundabout, where you have Stouts, which is a good establishment, and Oak Grove Tavern, also a good establishment, right across the street from Single Family Detached Residential. It's there currently. It exists. Everything is going smoothly. There's no reason to think that it won't happen here. Now, this particular piece of ground is undeveloped. And when we try to develop undeveloped ground, you really see it three separate times. Tonight, you're here on zoning, but you're also going to see it for plating, and you're also going to see it for site plan. But we know when people see undeveloped ground, they want to get a sense of what's going to happen here. So we did concept drawings that shows our vision or our intent for how we want to try and get this to develop. We found out Thursday some of those drawings were causing some angst among the residents. Well, we're sorry about that. I talked to staff on Friday to see if I could understand whether road issues were going to be an issue on this ultimately when it gets developed. And staff, to my chagrin, reminded me of something that I already knew, which is staff cannot and will not consider or comment on something which is not before it. And that's the issue here. Infrastructure for this site, infrastructure for everywhere when you have vacant ground, is analyzed and decided upon based in the plating process. Not only streets, but sewers, sidewalks, utility easements, all handled in plating. We put these drawings up to give people a sense of what's going on, but ultimately, they get decided in the plating process. And that's a public process as well, Your Honor. It's, staff makes comments, it goes to P&amp;Z, public comment, it goes to the council, public comment. There's plenty of opportunity for the public to talk about it when it properly gets in front of this body. Let me talk for just a minute about the zonings that we are requesting. And I'll start at the top north. I'll start at the southwest corner and work clockwise if I can. We're asking for C2 in the corner. And we're really asking for that because we want to make sure we have adequate ability to do a building size that'll meet the demand of our end users. I imagine most of you have gone to Smash Pizza. It's new. It's on Devil's Glen. It's very good. But if you go in there and try to find a place to sit, you're going to have a hard time because the restaurant part of it is just too small. God bless them. I hope they make a billion dollars. But the restaurant could be larger, and that's our concern. As we start to market this site to other users, we want to make sure the buildings can be of a sufficient size so that the people who go to the businesses can be adequately served. Now, we had a meeting with the neighborhood, and early on, it was before I was there. And the neighbors were absolutely adamant they did not want a gas station there. Gas station is currently permitted in a C1. It's otherwise permitted in a C2. That's where the, we were going to give up gas station condition came from. It's trying to meet the request of the neighbors. But we went further, and we went further because we recognize that the city of Bettendorf wants its downtown to be successful. And they have determined that even though there are, these are lawful uses, some of them simply shouldn't be in the downtown if we're trying to help facilitate successful development. We want to take that same attitude to this corner, and that's why we've put these extra use restrictions on the parcel. We want this parcel to be as much a success as the city wants the downtown to be a success. Moving just to the south, where we're talking about C2 ground for townhomes. This parcel is actually squeezed, and I don't think staff has really talked about this enough. You've got a major utility easement running down through the middle of this parcel, and you can't build on it. You can't do anything to it. Ultimately, the developer's got to make it look park-like. You can't do much of anything else to it. And on the other side, on the Devil's Glen side, you've got increased setback requirements and birmingham requirements because it's against Devil's Glen Road, which is a major, as we just said, a major thoroughfare in the city of Bettendorf. Because this particular parcel is squeezed from the west and squeezed from the east, we are asking for a C2 use because townhome use in C2 has smaller setbacks. And it makes this project ultimately work with the smaller setbacks. Because there were concerns about the use other than townhomes, we are restricting this solely to townhomes. I've never seen a restriction to one use in a zoning classification, but here it is, townhomes only. And in response to the concerns that Councilmember Adamson raised last night, we intended all along to have these townhomes be similar to what the pictures showed. But we want to make it crystal clear. So what we agreed to do today, and what we've submitted to the city clerk and the staff, is an agreement to allow a restriction on this parcel, not only just to townhomes, but to the townhome type that you've already seen with the two-car garage and the no more than two stories and the nice finishes, $400, $450,000 units, and no more than 35 foot tall. So what you're getting is a two-story townhome, just as we said it would be, except now the restrictions are in place to stop it from being anything else. Moving around to the side, we're requesting R3 again for townhomes. Because the pressure on the squeeze is not as much here, we are able to do these townhomes in the R3 with the existing setbacks and other restrictions that are normal in an R3. We think that the R3 and the C2 use, the townhomes, will be a good buffer from the commercial to that north to the southwest corner. And that's the traditional way of doing it. You have a buffer around the commercial. Finally, we have two last pieces. The R1 piece, where we are asking for R1 so we can help build single-family residential. The only thing I would highlight here for you is that if we're going to build single-family residential immediately to the west of our own project, we have to make sure that that project is going to be nice because otherwise, we're shooting ourselves in the foot, and we don't want to do that. The last parcel, Your Honor, is a request to make a parcel that's otherwise residential into C1. We are doing that, as staff said, so that we can combine the parcels and make a C1-type commercial strip building that will fit on that parcel. At P&amp;Z, it was raised, hey, you're prohibiting gas sales at the corner. What's prohibiting you from gas sales on this parcel? So we have, in working with staff, come up with a way to restrict gas sales on the part we are rezoning and the part that's not technically before you at this point because it's not being subject to rezoning. But we are agreeing that we are going to prohibit gas sales entirely from one end of this development to the other. Your Honor, this is a large project, and we've attempted to be responsive to the concerns raised as we've gone through it. But this is only the first step in the process. It's a first step, but every journey starts with a single step. We ask for support on all of the matters that are before you this evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Malloy, I will give you 10 minutes. Since that's what Mr. Jaeger took, instead of the two minutes, I'll hold most of the others due.
It was two minutes for each public hearing, Your Honor.
That's fair, and it's an important thing. I'm not, I get you.
Yeah, that's already done.
Good. No, I'm glad to hear that.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Thank you for the time to address the council tonight on this very important, complex rezoning that you have in front of you. And I am a Bettendorf attorney with offices on Tech Drive, and I'm here representing Dr. Alan Dirks, who resides at 6549 Blackberry Lane in Bettendorf and other Blackberry Lane residents whose property is situated to the east of case numbers 23014 and 23022. And those really are going to be the focus of what I'm going to address tonight to you folks to explain to you what still needs to be done to make these rezonings acceptable to the residents. Presently, we do oppose the case number 23014 and 23022 in its present form. We believe that there's still conditions that this council has the authority to attach to a rezoning as part of a rezoning request. While I understand and agree with Attorney Jaeger that the details of infrastructure are often handled at the plating process, the council can set conditions through restrictive covenants as they've already done in other cases. And they've already stated they've done restricting the uses of the property in the commercial areas to prohibit gas stations, for instance. We believe that the rezoning petition in its present form should be tabled by the city council and sent back to Plan and Zone Commission pursuant to section 11-15-13B of the Bettendorf City Code, which I've attached to a letter that I've provided the council tonight. And if the council decides that they're going to go forward and vote on the rezonings, the two rezonings that we are concerned about, as I've indicated, are case numbers 23-014 and 23-022. And those are the two properties that are adjacent to and border Devil's Glen Road. And those commercial or high-intensity residential developments are going to be directly across the street from the current single-family residential that exists to the east in the developments on Blackberry Lane and Lakeview Drive. And we met with Attorney Jaeger in my office last Thursday to discuss issues surrounding the rezoning. And we proposed three conditions. And I'm glad to hear that he has agreed to one of those conditions, which is the limitation on the proposed townhouse height to a height of 35 feet at grade level. The other two conditions that I would urge this council to consider adding as conditions tonight so that the residents here who are concerned about this rezoning know that this is going in the right direction are twofold. First of all, we're asking for a berm. We're asking for an earthen berm 10 feet in height that would extend along the boundary of Devil's Glen Road adjacent to the two rezonings of of Devil's Glen Road adjacent to the two rezonings of case numbers twenty-three oh one four and twenty-three oh two-two. The purpose of the berm, of course, is to screen this particular development from the single-family high-end development that has already occurred in this city on the east side of Devil's Glen Road. Remember, these folks are your, the backbone of this city. They're the taxpayers, they're the residents that are sending their kids to high school here, are paying real estate taxes and they're already here, folks. It's not like this rezoning is here first and they're coming in second. They've been here for a number of years and they should be accorded some conditions that would protect their real estate investments in this area. And the second issue that we, we would like the council to add as a condition is the proposed roadway that you currently have shown between case number twenty-three oh one four and twenty-three oh two-two. We want to deal with the roadway issue because that's the way the rezoning has been presented to the residents of Bettendorf. And the problem with the roadway presently is that it connects up directly in the same location to the Lakeview Court Street on the east. Naturally, that's the way it's usually done as far as connecting streets, so they're, they're parallel. But in this situation, you have a different and unique situation because you have a commercial development moving forward on the west side of Devil's Glen and you have the residential high-end existing development on the east side of Devil's Glen. Therefore, the residents on the east side do not want the traffic naturally that are becoming out from the current proposed roadway going directly east into Lakeview Court. And the reason for that, folks, is that there's no outlet for those, for that traffic to continue through all the way over, for instance, to Middle Road. Those residential developments both end in dead-end cul-de-sacs and what it's going to cause with that street location, it's going to cause unnecessary traffic flowing east into that residential cul-de-sac area and people simply realizing they can't get out directly and they're going to have to come back out the same way they came back in or otherwise go south further into the residential area to escape that particular area. They aren't, they aren't coming out of the commercial development, you know, to purposely, I don't think, go into the residential, but with the streets aligned that way, directly flowing together, people will presume they can continue east onto Lakeview to get out to Middle Road. And to correct that problem for the neighbors, for the residents of Bettendorf, we propose changing that roadway to the south side of the real estate land area regarding case number twenty-three oh two-two, which is the townhouse development. The roadway could come around the south side of that development instead of going directly through the current proposed location to Lakeview. If those two conditions were satisfied, the berm and the roadway reconfiguration, my clients no longer object to this rezoning, these two rezonings. The other three rezonings on the east side, we're not here to state any objections to and regarding twenty-three oh two-four, twenty-three oh one-seven, or twenty-three oh two-three. The focus is on the two that are adjacent to and border Devil's Glen Road. I've, know I've said a lot today, tonight, and maybe you didn't follow something, so I'll open it up to questions that you may have of me or there may be other residents here that want to address the issue also.
Thank you, Mr. Malloy. Any other attorney that represents a group that might have an opportunity to speak? If so, I'd like to have them speak now because I'll give you some extra time. You're representing a whole bunch of folks and I understand that two minutes for an attorney who's pitching the project or an opposition there too with multiple clients can take a little while. Okay. Anyone else who wishes to be heard on this item? If so, please approach the podium, state your name and your address. We'd like to hear from you.
Hello. My name is Jared Stein. I live at thirty-four hundred Crow Lake Drive, Bettendorf, Iowa, five P seven two-two. So I, I, I listened very intently and I heard some, some very interesting things from the applicant's attorney, Mr. Jaeger. He mentioned several times that they're squeezed in, that they just can't fit things. I agree. I think it's far too much development for one small area. There's a reason why they're having trouble and they need to compress things and they're, they're really doing that in terms of the space that they have available to them. I have a couple more points. And I, sorry. In terms of Stouts and Oak Tavern and the Woodlands Development, that was all done at the same time. People who moved in sort of knew what was being developed as they were moving in. I moved in twenty-sixteen. We knew this was residential and we expected continued residential. And in terms of the, 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 what, what has been described, I guess, as an error in terms of the open space and parks characterization of the area, I guess if I, if I, if I would sort of note, a correction, right? Correction to the DCA would not be to UMI, it would be to ULI, Urban Low Intensity, in terms of the C1. I oppose the proposed rezoning and I ask that the, this council consider the concerns of the residents of the area. In order to change the DCA, this has to be in the benefit of all of Bettendorf and not just the applicant. We have over six hundred people who have signed an online petition who oppose this rezoning and I ask that this council take that into consideration. There will be significant increased traffic, not just because of this development. I agree. However, this development will open the door to a couple of very specific things. I live on Crow Lake Drive, which is just down Devil's Glen. People have already started cutting through our neighborhoods because of the stop signs. The stop signs right now that are down by Hopewell Avenue, while great to allow for crossing, our students crossing the street, have caused significant backups, backups all the way back up to, to Forest Grove every morning and every night. I'm not an expert in terms of what the plans are. It didn't sound like there was a light plan for that area. I'm not sure how that's going to be addressed, but it's not going to get better, which means there will be people cutting through our neighborhoods more frequently. Additionally, and something that I, I think hasn't been really considered, is that when they eventually continue to develop, there, we were told that there will be an extra road that connects up to Forest Grove into the neighborhoods. The challenge with that is, is that now there will be an, an entrance to our neighborhood from both Forest Grove and from Devil's Glen, which means we're going to have people cutting through both ways. The only way to cut through and get out is to actually come through our neighborhood and then go down eight, go down Field Psych to Eighteenth. Field Psych to Eighteenth is a twenty-five mile per hour road and people already go far too fast down that road. The density, the size for this space, I find it very interesting that the, the height restrictions were set on a very specific parcel. I'm, I'm appreciative of the restrictions, but what if they build a hotel in that space? There's no height restriction on what they can build in that space and because it's a C2, we would be sort of coming back afterwards and saying, well, they didn't say they were going to build a hotel. And I have concerns that if that space is going to be used for sort of large-scale development, that this council be aware of that.
Mr. Stein, let's wrap it up for me, please.
And leave it at C1. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else wish to be heard? Please approach the podium, state your name and address.
Alan Dirks, sixty-five forty-nine BlackBerry Lane. And it all comes down for the Copper Ridge addition, that we want the road to not come across us and make a four-way stop there. We already, Mark Hunt already put a sign up there telling people to stay away. It doesn't connect to Forest Grove Road. He's already done that and I thank him for that. But all we want to do basically is just have a berm and we want the roadway moved to the south. There's room to do it, three hundred feet on each side of the intersection. There's very good room to do it. It really wouldn't hurt the development for the developer and if, if we get those things, we're gonna, we're, I'm going to back off, but we just need the roadway moved. It would move it farther away from the intersection of Devil's Glen and Forest Grove Road, therefore relieving some of the congestion from Betplex One, Betplex Two. We, we would like that and then like I say, berm it up and we're gonna, I'm, I'm going to be happy with it. And I think the residents of Copper Ridge would be too. So that's, that's the things we're sticking with. But they got it, you're coming from a commercial area and you're going to meet up with a private dead-end residential for us. And like I say, Mark already put a sign up there to try and keep it away and this is even before this starts. So that's all I'd like to consider and this can be planned. There's no reason it can't be. All the way along Devil's Glen, you see them that they don't match up all the way. There's no really reason for it that I see. What, maybe a snowplow or something that doesn't go around? I don't know. But I would like somebody to tell me why we can't do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dirks. Anybody else who wishes to be heard?
Yeah, my name is Neil Griffith and I live on fifty-three fifty Griffin Lane in Bettendorf. I don't have any dog in this hunt, but I guess I saw one thing in this public hearings, E&amp;A Enterprises. Who are they? Who owns them? Where are they from? What's their method of operation? Does anybody on the council know? I'd like to know. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Griffith. Anybody else wish to be heard?
My name is David Graham. I live at sixty-five eighty-two BlackBerry Lane, which my backyard is right beside Devil Glen Road, so I consider myself an expert on the traffic pattern there, if you don't mind. I have two things I just want to talk about. That is the roadway that we're, that has been talked about before coming out of the new development, going into our development. I believe because of the traffic patterns and the amount of traffic that's going through there, it's a safety issue. People coming out of the new development to go left or right, they have to look across to make sure there's no traffic there and people leaving Lakeview Court, the same thing. So I, I agree with moving it south. I think it'll avoid the safety issues that are going to arise from that. The traffic there sometimes is like a drag strip and it is a little annoying just because of the noise, but again, it's a safety issue from my perspective. And the other item I want to emphasize is for this development to be a good neighbor to us as residents there. Keeping things clean, having shrubbery trees, berms, that type of stuff is important to maintain the integrity of that whole neighborhood. So those are the two items that I just want to address the council. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Graham. Anybody else wish to be heard? On any of these public hearings that are pending on the property at the southwest corner of Devil's Glen and Forest Grove? Anybody else? Okay. We'll close. Yes.
If there is any discussion about conditions, if you want to have that.
Would you rather do that now?
And I'm just.
So that you could modify the resolution?
No, I, I guess I just wanted to make sure that we have an understanding for how we want to proceed with these additional conditions that Mr. Malloy discussed. If I could just maybe make a couple of comments on, on that.
I would like that.
So, the conditions on, on a, on a rezoning, they are allowed under four fourteen-five of Iowa code. Conditions can't be imposed just by council. It needs to come from the property owner. So, and, and that needs to be in writing before the close of a public hearing on a rezoning. So, conditions, of which there are many on these cases, those have been agreed in writing. So I just, I just, I want to be clear on, on how those conditions get here. They come from the property owner in writing and then they are agreed upon by, by council. And I, I think also, so there, there's been discussions of when certain actions take place. Is it at the plating stage? Is it at the site plan stage? Is it at the rezoning stage? Typically, things like streets and, and roads and berms take place at the site plan stage. They occasionally take place at a rezoning stage if it's, if it's a conditional rezoning. We have, again, we've got several of those in place, but I just want to be clear and I just want council to be aware of, of how that comes. You can't just say, I want this additional condition added to this rezoning. It needs to come from the property owner. So, and, and so I just want to be clear on, on that. It is, there are a lot of moving parts here and there are different actions that are, that are part of a rezoning here, but that will come before this body at a later time with a later land use action.
So if the rezoning's passed, you're telling us that in the future, these two things could be something that the applicant may, you know, in writing, agree to follow? And you're also telling us that should council wish to take up the fact that there could be a condition on the rezoning, that we not close the public hearing, which means I would need a motion to keep open the public hearing?
I, I'm just saying, council has before it, in applica, applications for rezoning, several of which have conditions. And once the public hearing is closed, then there are no more conditions that can be added to, to that rezoning. So I just want that to be clear. I think that, that's sort of where we are. Once you close the public hearing, no more conditions can be added to this, to that.
To the rezoning.
To the rezoning.
But at the plating stage, these two things can be brought up.
Well, they will, they will be brought, they will be brought up. I mean, by necessity, streets, easements, berms, those things come up at the site plan stage, particularly with berms. The, the road, the street alignments, the easements, those all take place at the, at the plating stage, so they will come before this body. It's just, is it going to be a condition to the rezoning? That's the question at the end here tonight.
Chris, can one of them be a condition to the rezoning tonight?
Only if the prop, only if, only if the property owner agrees to that.
Okay, they're not here.
Yeah, they're here.
No, the applicant.
The applicant.
The applicants are here. They're with their attorney, Mr. Jaeger, who spoke earlier. You'll have the opportunity at the plating stage and at the site plan stage to discuss it. They may agree at that point in time. We haven't had that conversation with them that I'm aware of. Have we had these two things that just got brought up tonight, discussed?
These, as, as Mr. Jaeger said, as Mr. Malloy said, there was a, a meeting that they had last week. They spoke to the city staff separately. The city staff isn't going to say, you know, we want this condition. If the property owner came to us with a condition, we would look at it, we would review it. We knew that these issues were, were important to, to certain residents and we also knew what was before us and we also knew what will come before council at a later date.
Okay.
So.
So I intend to close the public hearing to move forward with that, which is before you this evening. So I intend to close the public hearing to move forward with that, which is before you this evening, barring any other motion that we not do so. Okay, then let's, go ahead and answer your question. That's why we're doing this.
Okay, so there's one thing that I would like to consider that they have discussed. And one was this road alignment. So, so I'm to understand, then we discuss that later?
You have that opportunity at the plating stage for sure.
That's right.
Okay, okay.
Councilmember Adamson, your question, sir?
Just wanna make sure I understand this. I, I, I agree with some comments that were made and think it's a good idea. It wouldn't be practical to have them do this tonight, right?
They're before you tonight.
It isn't practical. And it's gonna come up. We'll have that opportunity, which I will support. I, I think it's a good idea. So, but we can get to that later. Tonight is rezoning.
Correct. That is correct.
Okay.
Any other questions? Mr. Palzinski, did you have a question, councilmember?
No, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's close the public hearing on case number twenty-three oh one three, twenty-three oh two one, twenty-three oh one four, twenty-three oh one seven, twenty-three oh two two, twenty-three oh two three, twenty-three oh two four. And move to the first ordinance. This is for councilmember Nauman.
Thank you, your honor. Do you have a reading here, the first reading of case number twenty-three dash zero one three, an ordinance approving the future land reuse amendment for the property generally located at the southwest corner of Devil's Glen Road and Forest Grove Drive. Open space and parks to UMI urban medium intensity. I move approval of the ordinance at the first reading.
Second. Any discussion here? We can have discussion on each one of these. I will consider and will make part of the record the discussion on any one for the rest of them. But we have to do the ordinances one by one instead of the public hearing, the way we did the public hearing. So discussion here. Councilmember Adamson?
Thank you, your honor. I've had a lot of phone calls and it's my ward. I live up in that area. Not real close, but, and, and a lot of mixed feelings about this. It's tough. It's a tough decision. But I, I'm gonna support the rezoning. I've had a couple of comments that they didn't care. They didn't want the rezoning. They didn't care what went in there. Really. So I think with these restrictions and, and some of the things that I really don't want to see up in our area, I think it's, it's the better choice to, to go ahead and rezone it and with, with the restriction. So I'm gonna support that.
Councilmember Brown, did you have anything to add?
I'm gonna just echo with Greg. They can coexist. I look at some areas around town where we've got kind of some of the slater commercial without the gas stations, Tanglefoot and Devil's Glen, Core Creek and Middle. We've got some high-priced houses. Those developments haven't been affected by that commercial that's been put in. So I feel comfortable with this. I think this developer's made a lot of concessions imposing on itself. I think if we did not go with this and potentially had a different developer came in, come in who wasn't so flexible in listening to these things, we could be in a different situation. So.
Sir? Councilmember Connors, go ahead.
I am encouraged and the neighbors should be encouraged that we have several more steps before this project comes to fruition. We've got preliminary plating. We've got final plating. We've got site development plan. That's really when the nuts and bolts of this whole subdivision take place. And that would be a good time for everybody to sit down and, and look at this. But I'm in favor of the rezoning. It's a first step in a multi-step process.
Councilmember Nauman?
Nothing to add, your honor.
Councilmember Saxer?
Nothing, your honor.
Councilmember Baden? Councilmember Palzinski?
Thank you, your honor. I, I would like to echo some of those comments. I've spoken to over two dozen of the residents out in that area and being, being new to this position and frankly, spent a lot of time thinking about this rezoning and, and what the future use of this corner might be. And it has come up in a number of the discussions that, you know, it's the responsibility of us as the council to ensure the best developments, not only for the residents that are in the area, but for the city of Bettendorf as a whole. And it is, we, we are tasked to make these decisions. And before us today, we have a strong amount of facts that show and represent to us that this is going to be, or has been very strategically thought out of what, what will, what will be developed there and, and what won't be developed there. And Mr. Jager's comments, I'm, I'm very pleased with the direction that this is headed. So I, I am in favor of this rezoning. Thank you.
Michelle, would you please call the roll on case number twenty-three oh thirteen?
Brown?
Aye.
Connors?
Aye.
Nauman?
Aye.
Saxer?
Aye.
Baden?
Aye.
Palzinski?
Aye.
Adamson?
Aye.
All right. The next item on the agenda is case number twenty-three oh twenty-one. And this is for councilmember Palzinski, please.
Thank you, your honor. In case number twenty-three dash zero two one, I have the first reading of an ordinance approving the future land use amendment for property generally located at the southwest corner of Devil's Glen Road and Forest Grove Drive. Open space and parks to ULI urban low intensity. I move approval of the ordinance at its first reading.
Second. Any discussion on this one that might be different than the last? Again, we'll cross everything and make sure it's there. Any discussion? No, sir. Okay, Michelle, please call the roll.
Brown?
Aye.
Connors?
Aye.
Nauman?
Aye.
Saxer?
Aye.
Baden?
Aye.
Palzinski?
Aye.
Adamson?
Aye.
We move to case number twenty-three oh fourteen. This is an ordinance for councilmember Connors, please.
Thank you, your honor. In case number twenty-three dash oh one four, I have the first reading of an ordinance amending the Bettendorf Iowa zone map for property generally located at the southwest corner of Devil's Glen Road and Forest Grove Drive. C one neighborhood commercial district to C two community commercial district. I move approval of the ordinance at its first reading, your honor.
Okay.
Any discussion here other than the first ordinance, which was case number twenty-three oh thirteen? Anything different additional? Okay, Michelle, please call the roll.
Brown?
Aye.
Connors?
Aye.
Nauman?
Aye.
Saxer?
Aye.
Baden?
Aye.
Palzinski?
Aye.
Adamson?
Aye.
All right. The next item is twenty-three oh seventeen. This is for councilmember Saxer, please.
Thank you, your honor. In case number twenty-three dash oh seventeen, I have the first reading of an ordinance amending the Bettendorf Iowa zone map for property generally located at the southwest corner of Devil's Glen Road and Forest Grove Drive. C one neighborhood commercial district to R one single-family residence district. I move approval of the ordinance at its first reading.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion here different than our first case, twenty-three oh thirteen? Michelle, would you please call the roll?
Brown?
Aye.
Connors?
Aye.
Nauman?
Aye.
Saxer?
Aye.
Baden?
Aye.
Palzinski?
Aye.
Adamson?
Aye.
The next is case number twenty-three oh twenty-two. This is for councilmember Baden, please.
Thank you, your honor. In case number twenty-three dash oh twenty-two, I have the first reading of an ordinance amending the Bettendorf Iowa zone map for property generally located at the southwest corner of Devil's Glen Road and Forest Grove Drive. C one neighborhood commercial district to C two community commercial district. I move approval of the ordinance at the first reading.
Second.
Second.
Any further discussion here different than that which was held on twenty-three thirteen? Michelle, would you please call the roll?
Brown?
Aye.
Connors?
Aye.
Nauman?
Aye.
Saxer?
Aye.
Baden?
Aye.
Palzinski?
Aye.
Adamson?
Aye.
We move to case number twenty-three oh twenty-three. This is a reading for councilmember Adamson, please.
Thank you, your honor. In case number twenty-three dash zero two three, I have the first reading of an ordinance amending the Bettendorf Iowa zone map for property generally located at the southwest corner of Devil's Glen Road and Forest Grove Drive. C one neighborhood commercial district to R three mixed residential district. I move approval of the ordinance at its first reading.
Second.
Any discussion here different than that which was heard for twenty-three oh thirteen?
No, sir.
All right. Michelle, would you please call the roll?
Brown?
Aye.
Connors?
Aye.
Nauman?
Aye.
Saxer?
Aye.
Baden?
Aye.
Palzinski?
Aye.
Adamson?
Aye.
Okay, this next one is case number twenty-three oh twenty-four for councilmember Brown.
Hey, your honor. In case number twenty-three dash zero two four, I have the first reading of an ordinance amending the Bettendorf Iowa zone map for property generally located at the southwest corner of Devil's Glen Road and Forest Grove Drive. R one single-family residence district to C one neighborhood.
Second.
Any further discussion on this ordinance different than that which was heard on twenty-three oh thirteen? Michelle, would you please call the roll?
Brown?
Aye.
Connors?
Aye.
Nauman?
Aye.
Saxer?
Aye.
Baden?
Aye.
Palzinski?
Aye.
Adamson?
Aye.
We have approved the two future land use amendments and the rezoning five ordinances, seven to zero unanimously on the southwest corner of Devil's Glen Road and Forest Grove Drive. We move to, yeah, let's do that. Let's take a six-minute break here. It's eight nineteen. We'll be back at eight thirty. It's eight twenty-four, but we'll be back at eight thirty. Six minutes. Go to the restroom. If you need something, get it from the back. But we'll start promptly at eight thirty. Thank you. Had a longer presentation on last night. Had an opportunity to discuss. Also had the opportunity to review and view the planning and zone commission meeting and have received some correspondence with regard to the same. So, Mr. Hunt, our director of community development is back with us. Sir, you have the floor.
Uh, thank you, your honor. Members of the council, I want to go over case twenty-three eighteen at Middle Road and Hopewell Avenue with you again. As the mayor said, you are very familiar, but I'll give you the Cliff Notes version if you will. The applicant has been east up. The location is Hopewell Farms First Edition. Proposed uses would be church and townhomes. To do that, they would need a rezoning from A one agricultural urban reserve to R three mixed residential district. This is roughly a seventeen and a half acre lot. Aerial photo shows it here. Here is the rezoning exhibit showing the detailed property boundaries for the area in question. Some drone photography from, photography from the city of Bettendorf showing a couple of key features here. One, this large busy intersection, another one of our busiest intersections in Bettendorf. We do have rooftops coming in over here from a similar type of build that, that is being proposed for a portion of this site. The site is bifurcated by this, this swale. It is within the hundred-year floodplain on the lower portions, but the majority of the site is not within the floodplain. Future land use designations exist already and are not for consideration today. Urban medium intensity to the west side and then urban low intensity, kind of dividing it slightly in half by that swale area on the east side. Current zoning is A one, as I mentioned, but I would point out, we do have R one, R three at the borders here. We do have R five nearby to the south. This A one piece is owned by the city. This, and extending to the south, will be held as drainage, stormwater containment for the city of Bettendorf. I would expect that the north side of the Hopewell intersection here would rezone and be developed in the future as well. Here's a concept plan. This is a conditional rezoning, which seems to be a current theme for the city right now. Some things to point out, fifty-six total units, church on the, on the corner on the west side. These, these townhomes, which are similar to the townhomes being built just to the south by the windmillers, would be on the edges of the property. Smaller townhomes in the center of the property. This would be public right-of-way, all of these roads. It has always been the city's contention that this black, I'm sorry, bridle, excuse me, Butterfield Court should run, should continue. And that's why it was never cul-de-sac. And so that will continue up to Hopewell. On the concept here, we are showing some increased buffers along the residential portions, the R one portions of this area that are five feet beyond what is required by, by the city's code and provides additional planting as well. So roughly a ten percent more planting, again, on those R one areas. And as far as density calculations go, they have three thousand square feet of space per unit required. They're more than double that at almost seven thousand square feet of space required per unit. Here are some elevations showing the smaller centered townhomes, if you will. Here's the church looking towards the intersection. And here are the, the townhomes, which are similar to those being built in the Woodmiller subdivision just to the south. Everything two stories, by the way. We do have a positive staff recommendation. And we did have a seven zero recommendation for approval by the Planning and Zoning Commission on April nineteenth, twenty twenty-three. I would be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Understanding you all had questions and opportunities last night. Does anyone have any questions for Mark tonight? Councilmember Adamson?
Thank you. Just one quick on your honor. How many, how many acres is the, not the church half, the?
Almost.
East half, yeah.
Eight or nine each, eight or nine each side, plus or minus.
Acres.
Acres.
And how many, how many units?
Almost eighteen acres.
How many acres could, I mean, how many units could there be?
Oh, well, I didn't bring my calculator up here, but you'd have to take, you'd have to take the total square footage of nine, let's just call this nine acres.
Yeah.
And you gotta have, you gotta have three thousand square feet out of that. I won't do the math, but it could easily be double.
Okay. And they, they did take out a few, right?
They took out six. So there's been iterations of, as I think you're noticing when staff works on these projects, we have neighborhood meetings. We have meetings with, with the applicants. We, we try and get them to find the happy medium, if you will. So we've had them take some units out. They've increased some buffers. They have to stay away from the, the stream bank over here. Stream bank is a kind of, maybe incorrect term, but a fifty-foot buffer off of that drainage wave. So they're really squeezed. So that's why the, if you just look at the project and don't look at the whole area, you might think it looks kind of compact. Well, that's because they're giving up ground over here, giving up ground to the south, and they have to stay fifty feet off of this stream. And then the church wants a larger area reserve for, for the church development and a yard to hold services or that type of thing.
Thank you. Thank you, your honor.
Any other questions for Mr. Hunt? Yes, councilmember Baden?
Thank you, your honor. That green space with the plantings, that is not a berm, right?
No, I don't think it'd be a berm. No, that would be just a, an increased planning. We wouldn't really want to have a berm there. I think that would be problematic.
Yeah, I'd assume from the number of plants there that it wasn't, but just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Councilmember Palzinski, did you have a question at all for Mr. Hunt before we open the public hearing?
I do not.
Okay, thank you, sir. Michelle, did we publish notice of this public hearing?
Yes, we did, your honor. I do have affidavit of publication.
All right. Did we receive any written correspondence with regard to the same that the council has not seen?
No, we have not.
Okay. Let's open the public hearing with regard to fifty nineteen Hopewell Avenue. If anybody here wishes to be heard on the item, please approach the podium in the back, state your name and address. Please limit your comments to two minutes. Please try not to be repetitive. Please refrain from outbursts like clapping and yelling and respectful with your comments. Hi there.
Hi, my name is Wendy Clifton. I'm at fifty-three twenty-three Hopewell Court. I'd like to first of all apologize for my voice. I do have an issue with my vocal cords. I might sound like I get excited and I might even sound like I'm yelling. I'm not. Sometimes it's the only way to get out noise. So please bear with me on that. The way, where I live, if you look at that particular condition, is I live where the Butterfield extends and you've got the townhouses on the right-hand side. And the condition that's been put in place is thirty feet, which, as I understand it, where my land stops, the next house behind me starts within thirty feet. So I just measured it out while we were here. It's that wall to about that doorway. Now I hear over and over how they're giving us more than they have to. I get that. I drove around town today to see what other townhome divisions are out there that have. I drove around town today to see what other townhome divisions are out there that have houses that close to the townhomes behind them. I found one. We've been compared to the Meadows. The Meadows, first of all, Christie Lane does not have a single fourplex behind it. Number two, if you look at the Meadows back to back, they have probably close to a hundred feet between them. We are one of the most affluent neighbors, neighborhoods in the city of Bettendorf. We invested our money to have a beautiful home, a large property, and to get the maximum benefit and profit for our retirement. I did a study in the neighbors, the three streets butt up to this, Butterfield, Griffin, Hopewell Court. Looking at all of the assessed values on each of those, our values are over six hundred thousand dollars. Square footage is over three thousand square feet and lot size is a half an acre. The proposed townhouses, as I understand it, are between two and three hundred thousand dollars. There is a severe disparity between a high-end subdivision and a lower-end subdivision connection. That has a negative impact to my home value. Now, the developer said it best at the neighborhood meeting when asked, why don't you take this to a zone, a property that's already zoned for this exact type of subdivision? And they made it very clear, it's because they cannot make, gain the profits they need to make it worth their while to do that. Somebody's gonna make a profit, but the developer should never make a profit at the expense of mine. The developers not from Bettendorf, they do not pay Bettendorf taxes. The church is exempt from taxes. The only people paying taxes is the residents of those three streets. So it makes zero sense that this is a type of subdivision that is put there. I thank you, Nick, for, um, I'm sorry, Alderman Palzinski, for saying, your decisions need to be based on the betterment of Bettendorf, not just one area. This does not better the city of Bettendorf. That is our biggest concern. Our second concern is the density. They've reduced it to fifty-six. Okay, I'll, I'll finish up. They've reduced it to fifty-six. However, if you look at the property around it, there's four times the density, density that butts up to all the, the affluent homes. There's four times the density in that one little area, four times. So my request of the council, I hope you will hear us, is for this to make sense, we have to have further setbacks, we have to have higher-end homes that are more like the homes that they're surrounding it. The R one, not necessarily an R one home, but more like those homes that are of a higher value. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Clifton. Anybody else wish to be heard on this item?
Good evening, I'm, I'm Craig Reese. I'm actually the pastor of Hope Church and, uh, we've been working through this process with C T Creek and at the Planning and Zoning Committee and, you know, I, I, I understand a lot of the, the different concerns, the residents. I think what's interesting to me was last month at the Planning and Zoning Committee, a lot of the, the discussions that have been brought up about these homes and what they're gonna do to property values was debunked, that here in Bettendorf, and it was some members of the Planning and Zoning Committee meeting last month here in this room, um, that where there's higher-end homes, I myself live in a higher-end home, uh, right with Hopewell in my backyard, and one day there's gonna be things built right across the street from us too. Um, there's a cornfield right now, but I know that's gonna change, but it's been proven that, um, at least from the studies Planning and Zoning Committee has done, that it does not hurt property values to have townhomes nearby. It's not gonna destroy, you know, people's retirements income and was actually stayed last month at the Planning and Zoning Committee, that's pretty much a, a fallacy. And so I understand the concerns. I, I, like anybody, wouldn't want my home values going down. I wouldn't want, um, you know, to think about, even myself, I'm ten years away from retirement. I wouldn't wanna, um, think about that either, but I do believe, looking at what these are gonna look like, I, I think for young professionals in our city looking for, um, homes like this and where they can be in the Pleasant Valley School District and different things, I think they're very, they're very nice homes. We're, we're, we'll be proud to have them if this is approved as our neighbors at the church. I think it'll be, be a nice community and I, I understand the need for the, the berm or the, the trees and different things to separate out a little bit, but based on what was shared last month at the Planning and Zoning is, is my understanding, it's not gonna hurt property values, the, some of the water issues that have been brought up, the city's already planned for. And also I'm appreciative of C T Creek, they really have tried hard to listen to the neighbors and, and, and do a lot, what the original plan was a lot less density and, um, try to make this work. And, um, they, they, they may or may not be from out of town, they're from nearby. They have built other developments in the Bettendorf area, I understand. And also, um, I think it's good to have some, some, you know, these houses are gonna be pretty near three hundred thousand dollars, they're gonna be, they're gonna have long professionals moving into them, there's not gonna, they're not gonna add crime, I don't think of some, we don't want crime behind our church. I think there's gonna be a nice addition to our community. As a matter of fact, I live within a quarter mile, just across from the other side of the street, across, uh, uh, Middle Road and, and Haley Heights over there. So, so we as a church are for it. We've been, City, C T Creek's been very cooperative working with us. I do understand the neighbors' concerns, I understand some of the neighbors aren't thrilled with us as a, a church either, but, but we do feel like this is a good thing for the community and we do feel like it will not hurt property values based on what was shared last month at the Planning and Zoning Committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor Keesh. Anybody else wish to be heard on this item?
Tim Cernan, fifty-two thirteen Hopewell Court. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council. Just a, a, a couple of quick things. We were never against the church. I mean, none of the neighbors were against the church. When we talked to our realtors, when we bought in the area, we knew the church was gonna be there. There was never talk of townhomes though, and so, um, that'd be the concern. We still believe that the church and the townhomes should have been considered by the Planning and Zoning Commission as two separate projects, um, 'cause the church would have been allowed as an A three. After the first, uh, meeting, the developer did reduce the number of townhome units by six. The buffer, um, did increase by five feet. However, um, for some of the neighbors we've talked, we would like a buffer. We would like a, I mean, honestly, I'd like a ten-foot buffer and I know that's something that we would have to discuss at a further timeframe. Some of the things that I hope the council understands and I'm appreciative of the Planning and Zoning Commission, I'm pleased, uh, appreciative of the city council, because before this process, I had no idea. And, and I still don't have a lot of ideas about the whole process and things like that, um, nor an attorney, don't pretend to be. However, where do we get educated on some of this stuff? And, and so that's a challenge to myself and, and some other folks. We ought to have the sources, because when I hear at the last Planning and Zoning Committee or meeting, staff worked with the developer, who worked with the neighbors? We want, we want growth, we want neighborhoods, um, we want Bettendorf to thrive, we want more professionals. So a lot of those things that we, we do want, but my, my issue and it's for me to be better educated moving forward, and I will, and I'll continue to ask questions, so, um, but time, there's a lot of time that goes into that. You know, it was mentioned revisions have been made over time to the comprehensive plan. And, and we heard at the last meeting that we need to have a step down and, and the church would have been that step down, um, because we are, because the development was calling for, you know, businesses on those corners, and so completely understand that. And then the, the last thing I, I wanna bring up, and maybe I misheard at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting when they voted, but I thought there was a nay. But if, if that can be revisited or just a, a follow-up, I thought there was one nay. And so just something that I thought I, I paid attention to on that side of it. And, well, just two more things and I apologize and I'll be done. But just for the council to, to know, Planning and Zoning, C T Creek was able to, to have conversations via Zoom and I brought this up the last meeting, and it was unfair that our neighbor, Jim Walsh, who was, uh, probably one of the best speakers for us at the Planning and Zoning Commission, didn't get a chance to follow up. And it was brought up by the, uh, Planning and Zoning that, um, just for clarification's sake, that's why they were on Zoom. And so, uh, just another thing for us to be better educated on, and so it would have been nice for Jim to be able to speak on behalf of all of our neighbors. But with that, I thank you for your time and appreciate what the council does. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cernan. The plan and zone vote, we will definitely look into and we, our, our attorney was already taking a, a quick note and then, uh, C T Creek being allowed to, uh, be there by Zoom wasn't, uh, it won't happen again. So, sorry about that. Uh, anybody else wish to be heard on this item? Go ahead and approach the podium. Yep, let's.
Hi, I'm John Huffman. I live at fifty-five seventy-five Berkshire Street. And so, um, I understand that you watched the video of the, uh, Planning and Zoning Committee meeting on the nineteenth and I'm right on that, right? The council viewed that video. Okay, and so you know that my main concern was, uh, the flood plan, with stormwater runoff management plan. And I just wanna set the record straight. At that, at that meeting, I said that I had sent, uh, email out and didn't get any response. Nick Palzinski did respond to me on phone and, and both him and S- uh, Scott Nauman have, have reached out to me too. And so I just wanna be clear about that. Thank you, your honor, and the council for the chance to talk. Um, and thank you for the directors, to the directors and the city staff for all the work that you do. You make this a premier city and I appreciate that. Uh, like I said, my concern was about flood management and the, and it felt like the city's position was that the flood basin, which is downstream from me, just north of Fifty-third Avenue, would, would protect my property from flooding, my house from flooding, a collection basin would do that. And I know that the city and I will never agree on that and, um, um, but I will say that, um, Brent Marlock and I shared several emails and we met last week and I'm thankful that he stayed engaged because, um, I did find the process very frustrating. And I'll say that I found it mainly frustrating because I came into the game late. I had to find out from my neighbors about it. It's not a condemnation, I'm just telling you, that's why I, why I acted the way I did. Brent has talked about the water quality detention that's gonna happen on the two properties and that that will help with, I hope I'm not putting any words in your mouth, but that will help with some of the retention of the water, uh, and address what I'm gonna call stormwater runoff that could flood my property. And so I have confidence now in him, uh, in saying that. And so thank you for your time on that. I just wanna clarify that. And then, um, lastly, and I hope you don't take this as a criticism, uh, but, uh, when the city says that Butterfield Court was never intended to be a dead end because streets that are dead-ended permanently are cul-de-sacs, when you say that and then when a citizen like me, if you go to where those hippies is or by the fire station, Forty-ninth Avenue is dead-ended. And it's not just dead-ended, it's dead, it's a beautiful dead end, uh, where there's additional parking as well as Charter Oaks. And so I'm just saying that if you don't want citizens to get frustrated with the process, then it either, uh, stop saying that or undead-end those streets that aren't cul-de-sacs, that, that would be fair. And then, uh, again, thank you, uh, for, for all the work that you do. I did, I am asking and I know, and when I talked to Brent, he said, it's hard on, it's hard to know how many residents to notify when we're talking about rezoning. And so I appreciate that. But if it's a creek that flow, if it's gonna be stormwater creek, you gotta look at all the residents that have property that butt that creek rather than just stand with four hundred feet. I'm just asking you to consider that. Lastly, I'm gonna tell you that, uh, my, my wife and my grandkids, we're gonna enjoy the Public Works event that's gonna happen on Saturday. I appreciate that. I just, I appreciate what you do for the community and, uh, and I appreciate the work of the staff and the directors.
Thank you, Mr. Huffman. Appreciate your comments. Anybody else wish to be heard on this item?
Good evening, uh, my name's Nathan Schuly. I'm, I live on fifty-two forty-one Hopewell Court. I'll be quick, 'cause I don't have a whole lot to add that some of my neighbors haven't already said. My house, um, is actually butted up right to the back end where the new townhomes will be. My wife and I moved back to the Quad Cities a few years ago. When we moved back, um, we looked at a number of different houses, different areas. We looked at this because we wanted to be in a more affluent area, a bigger home, a better property, and what we were told by our realtor is there's gonna be a church there and we were okay with that. With this rezoning, um, basically my, my backyard, we just invested in a new patio, my, my assessed value just went up in my home, but my new view is now going to be basically a back of a two-story townhome. And it's, like I said, twenty-five to thirty feet away. It's not that far when you start to actually look at that and actually make a, you know, you measure that out. My neighbor, Tim, talked about the berm. I, I'm, I'm right next to him. I agree with, I would rather have a berm, I'd rather have something that's, uh, a little bit more distinguished, um, and, you know, that's, that's what it is. So I, I don't, ultimately, I just, I'm concerned about my property value. I, I invested more money in this house than my last house in Bettendorf before I moved back and I, I just worried that my property value is gonna go down. And I'm not, I'm not a, uh, city planner, I don't understand, um, maybe how the property values, you know, there's, I know there was a comment that was made earlier, um, there's a lower property value. I probably, if I would have known there was gonna be townhomes there, I probably wouldn't have bought there, so. And I'm, I'm concerned about the next person behind me. So that's all I have. Appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schuly. Anybody else wish to be heard on this item?
I'm John Axtehl, I live at thirty-one seventy Parkwall Drive. And I'm actually the youth and kids pastor at Hope Church. And I just wanted to say that my wife and I live in an apartment right now and looking at the townhouses, especially the ones off of Middle Drive, the ones that are just beautiful, every single one is different, they're just beautiful. I just love looking at them. And for an opportunity for us to be able to have something like that in our backyard, I think that would be an awesome opportunity, just something beautiful, something else to add to Bettendorf, 'cause I know down by the Betplex and everything down there by the end of Middle Road is gonna be busy very, very soon. And so I just think that it'll be a good addition, it'll be something nice to look at. That is all.
Thank you, Mr. Axtehl. Anybody else wish to be heard on this item?
My name is Neil Griffith. I live at fifty-three fifty Griffin Lane. Uh, I don't abut the property, but I'm very close to it. I guess alls I'm gonna do is add to what I've already heard. Uh, my biggest concern is the density of the, uh, buildings being built in that small area. I would like to see it a lot less, uh, density in that location. I also, uh, concur with the other residents about a berm. There was some talk about landscaping, about putting in trees. Uh, I've seen some of that done where, you know, you gotta get some trees and two, one guy's hauling two trees in each hand out and putting them on the, for the landscaping, but you'd have to have something like, uh, an end loader or a, a bobcat with a tree with a burlap underneath it where you gotta pull it out there, put it in a hole and, and show something out there that, uh, can, uh, identify the differences on hiding the property that we wanna, we wanna do. But other than that, I just would like you to reevaluate the density, reduce the amount of, uh, uh, townhomes going in there. That'd be my, 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 uh, wish. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Griffith. Anybody else wish to be heard on this item?
Hi, my name is Rob Davis. I'm with the developer, C T Creek. Um, we are thirty-four eighty, um, Glenbrook Circle North out of Bettendorf, um, just to clarify. And I really don't have a lot of points. I think, um, Mr. Hunt and Mr. Beck did a nice job in their, in their evaluation of our application. Really what it boils down to is we, we spend our time and energy evaluating this property based on the future land use and the comp plans that were out there. And the use that we have come up with, the plans that we have come up with, they fit within that, they're perfectly allowable, um, they're allowable to the tune of, you know, somewhere along, you know, thirty percent, um, of what is allowable there actually. So we did have our neighborhood meetings, we listened to, to the public, um, I know not to the tune that they want, but we did reduce our, um, density as much as we can while still making the project viable for us. We have, I, I also think I heard through here, I wanna clarify, our townhomes on the perimeter of our development are all single-story. So the only two-story townhomes in our development are on the center of our development. So I think that does help. I know, you know, it doesn't increase from thirty to fifty feet, but it certainly should increase, um, the, the effect that it has from your neighbors being a single story. So, again, thank you all for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Anybody else wish to be heard on this item?
Good evening, Your Honor, Council. Brian Belk, Acxiom Consultants, represent the engineering and the applicant here. I, I don't have a whole lot to add either. I appreciate all the city staff's time as well as Planning and Zoning and the council. I, I will add just a couple of items. I wanted to respond in terms of the distance that we're showing in the concept plan from the outer town home to the north property line of Butterfield. It's actually seventy-five to a hundred feet, really, when you, when you look at that, more like a hundred feet from the existing residential home on the east side, or I'm sorry, on the west side of the street and on the east side, a hundred twenty-five to a hundred fifty feet. So just wanted to note, remember that setbacks are to the property line. And then there's additional setbacks from that property line to the next structure itself. Other than that, like note that we've continued to try to adjust and improve this in terms of our feedback that we've received from the neighbors. And with that was some of that stormwater that has already been alluded to. We've been working with engineering and, and Planning and Neighborhood Development Services to add that stormwater quality volume, which we have done both on Hope Church as well as the residential. Happy to answer any other questions, but thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Belk. Anybody else wish to be heard on this item? Ms. Clifton, we've already heard from you on this item. So I appreciate your comments.
A second time?
No, ma'am. Thank you. Anybody else wish to be heard on the item?
Glenn Dugan, 5736 Butterfield Court. I more have questions, a couple of questions rather than matters to discuss about this property. First thing is, I understand this property tonight to be considered Hopewell Farm First Edition. I have a letter from the city describing a meeting tomorrow night about Hopewell Farm Second Edition. And those of us in the neighborhood are wondering what that is. In other words, since we live next to the First Edition, is this a property that we should attend a hearing for?
You're certainly welcome to do so, Mr. Hunt.
Right, so the, the planning process, as we've talked about earlier, involves sometimes a rezoning, then a plat, then a site development plan. And the plat for this new addition would be coming through the planning process now. So that's that planning and zoning stage for the, for the plat.
For the Second Edition, which is where?
Which would be this, just dividing the two lots.
Oh, this is part of, we got Edition One and Edition Two right in front of you right now. Thank you.
Okay, so thank you. And the, the second, is, is tomorrow night then the time we can discuss some of the details of the development itself? In other words, the buildings and all this kind of stuff? We understand tonight's discussion is about the zoning specifically. Is that something for a forum tomorrow night?
Yeah, so tomorrow night's discussion will be about a final plat for the two lots. And then the site plan consideration for the church will be coming to planning and zoning, just the church's site plan at that point.
So I'm sorry for the confusion. Tomorrow night is the church aspect of the property?
Final plat for both, both pieces of the, both sides.
And then the church site plan.
Planning and zoning. Again, all that is then, of course, contingent upon a rezoning being passed by this council.
Tonight.
All right, thank you.
Anybody else wish to be heard on this item? All right, we'll close the public hearing and we'll move to the ordinance. Councilmember Connors, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. In case number twenty-three dash zero-one-eight, I have the first reading of an ordinance amending the Bettendorf, Iowa zone map for 5019 Hopewell Avenue Lot One, Hopewell Farm First Edition, A1 Agricultural Urban Reserve District to R3 Mixed Use, Mixed Residential District. I move approval of the ordinance at its first reading.
Any discussion? Councilmember Naumann?
Thank you, Your Honor. Although Mr. Cernan and others have indicated that perhaps the church portion is not controversial on any level, my employer has been working with Hope Church, and I do not want to have any appearance of any conflict of interest. So with your permission, Your Honor, I'd like to recuse myself from the voting and discussion process.
Good idea. Any further discussion?
Thank you, Your Honor.
Councilmember Connors?
I realize we have both of these coming up for site development plan in the future. I think Mr. Griffith brought up a good point. Is there going to be discussion about the minimum caliper size of trees for the screening?
Yeah, absolutely. That's something we can condition. Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Adamson, anything on this one?
No, sir.
Councilmember Brown? Councilmember Palzinski?
Thank you, Your Honor. I wanted to start by just thanking all the residents for all of their feedback. I've spent countless hours on, on the phone with many of them. And while I do recognize that this is a, everybody has the, you know, visceral reaction to what's going to be coming next to their home and where they've built their life. I've really wrestled with this pretty significantly over the past few months. And frankly, I'm glad that we're not talking about a business coming in here. I know that this may be less than desirable for some of the residents that are in this area. But I, I, I think about, you know, a number of businesses that would meet the zoning requirements or that could potentially meet the zoning requirements and what that would mean for the residents in this area. And so I think as we look at the development of Bettendorf and where the growth is, where, where the growth is headed, and certainly this particular development, I've made the decision that I'm going to, I'm going to support the rezoning of this development tonight.
Thank you. Councilmember Baden, anything to add? Or Councilmember Saxer?
No, sir.
Okay, Michelle, would you please call the roll?
Brown?
Aye.
Connors?
Aye.
Naumann?
Recuse.
Saxer?
Aye.
Baden?
Aye.
Palzinski?
Aye.
Adamson?
Aye.
Okay, that ordinance passed unanimously. We'll move to the next public hearing. This is with regard to a lease and development agreement for city-owned property at 845 State Street. And unless anybody wants more information, I think we were well schooled yesterday. Does anybody wish for me to ask our Assistant City Administrator Jeff Ryder to answer any questions? Okay, Michelle, did we publish notice of this public hearing?
Yes, we did, Your Honor, and I do have affidavit of publication.
Did we receive any written correspondence with regard to the same?
No, we did not.
Let's open the public hearing with regard to 845 State Street. Anybody here wish to be heard on this item? All right, we'll close the public hearing, move to the resolution. Councilmember Saxer, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a resolution approving a lease and development agreement for city-owned property at 845 State Street with Platinum Salon and Spa LLC. I move approval of the resolution.
Second. Any discussion here? Councilmember Adamson?
Just want to say thank you to everybody that's involved in this because that's going to be a really nice-looking entrance into the city. And I, I'm really enthusiastic about it.
Good to hear. Any further discussion? Michelle, please call the roll.
Brown?
Aye.
Connors?
Aye.
Naumann?
Aye.
Saxer?
Aye.
Baden?
Aye.
Palzinski?
Aye.
Adamson?
Aye.
Okay, this public hearing, I'm also going to waive Mr. Schatz's any presentation because we had a lot of that last night. We understand these. Unless anybody has questions, if you have questions, he's here and we'll answer those questions. Okay, Michelle, did we publish notice of this public hearing?
Yes, we did, Your Honor, and I do have affidavit of publication.
Did we receive any written correspondence with regard to the same?
No, we did not.
Let's open the public hearing with regard to our budget amendments. Anybody here wish to be heard on this item? Close the public hearing.